Hey, Jefferson's back.
Alright, good evening everyone, we are going to go to item three, our public session of tonight's school board meeting. And we'll start with a salute to the flag, if everyone could please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every being and every creature of the world. Colleen, were the meetings posted as required?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you very much, and now we'll move on to item four, which is our public participation. We will have no more than thirty minutes for our public participation. I ask that anybody who would wish to speak would keep their comments to three minutes, and please state both your name and where you live in. If we do run out of time, not very likely, we do have another public participation at the end of the meeting. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board currently? Alright, seeing none, we will, I will close that portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to item five, our students, our schools, with our Franklin Middle School Bravely team.
Hello everyone. For those of you who may not know, Carissa Coro and Brianna Vandell, she is our fifth grade team lead, and she has been with district for...
Twenty years.
Twenty years, you never wanna just guess on that kind of stuff, I knew it. I know she's the second most seasoned Franklin teacher in my opinion.
Thank you for that, thanks senior.
Uh, no, you're too young for that. Um, so this past year, we have had the opportunity to have what is called the Bravely Grant. It comes from next generation learning challenges, which I report on to you guys all the time. And what we did this year was, when we got the grant, was I selected a group of teachers that I thought were up to the challenge, and I selected my fifth grade team, which is headed by Brianna. Unfortunately, her, one of her teammates is working tonight, and the other one is taking care of a dog who's having seizures, so she's here solo. Well, not really, because Carissa and I are here. The Bravely Grant was an opportunity for us to look at the portrait of a graduate, and have some time to think about and come up with a plan for how we were going to introduce it at the middle school level, and how we were going to really make people care about the portrait itself, and its relevance to not just graduating seniors, but to all students, in this case in grades four through eight, as well as the parents and the educators in the building. When you have a whole lot of different initiatives going on, oftentimes it's a little hard to garner enthusiasm for anything new, anything added to anyone's plate. Brianna and her team did an amazing job, and we are going to let her go.
What we're gonna like, Carissa go.
We're just gonna play the video, so that, like, this is written and produced, but not edited, by fifth graders.
A graduate is a person, of what we want a fifth grader to be, and who we want to graduate, and even actually graduate. The end of the video is how my actions will look like after.
There is like to developing a personal and financial success.
A community is a group of people that work together to build something.
This is taking care of your body, mind, spirit, and everything.
One of us is a teenager, I mean, a teenager's safety.
Possibility is playing up here.
When we worked out when this was, uh, starting here, we all had to, like, every time we saw somebody, we said something nice about them. We did that with the next student, and a lot of times, we just grew up saying these things.
Okay, so we're all about, uh, about the, uh, capital, and all the systems, they've used, and everything else, so.
So when we, uh, get to the responsibility, if you can say, uh, say, uh, after lunch, to call your teacher's classroom, that's what I did. Or you can also, um, uh, the school would start, uh, getting, uh, trash, and, uh, other rubbish, I thought.
All the resources I learned to use this year was Canva. And, you know, we're doing a lot of things, we're doing projects, we made photographs, we're doing projects, we're doing photographs.
So the, uh, the video, I think you guys, and that helps me help, uh, whatever I should put in, or picture, or anything, and it really does.
We made a, a, like, like, meant to be, uh, you share things with other people, so we understand that, to make All About Me, like, videos. And I made it about who I want to be, whether I want to do, like, football, football is, but, I don't know.
Like, one thing we have broken, is we did a project, a science about constellations, and we had fourth grade come down, and we told them all about constellations, what I did for the constellations, I did careers. And the fourth graders came down, and then they asked us questions about the constellations, and then they asked us some, came to ask us questions about, um, the thing.
So, I don't know if the audio is a little rocky on some of that, um, but the kids have really taken on this task with a lot of, um, a lot of thoughtfulness and willingness to share out what they're doing and what they're learning, and Brianna has brought you, uh, one of the things, one of the kids, I don't know how well you can, I mean, I kinda know what they're saying, so it's easier for me, but one of, one of the things they learned to do was to navigate Canva, which is a, um, program that we have available for all the students and staff in the school. And, um, one of the other things that they were able to engage in a lot when they were doing this work this year, was working in our, our new maker space. So, we, um, combined two of their things, and would you like to hand those out?
Sure.
And just talk a little bit about your kids?
Um, so, we tried to make sure with the fifth graders that a lot of the commitments for, actually, all the commitments for Portrait of a Graduate are in kid-friendly terms. And we did that a lot by asking them, what does it mean to you? So we would give them, like, the adult words and, and examples, and they would turn around and kind of put it in their own words. So one of the things that we did to kind of help them better understand was, in Canva, we had, um, let them create designs, and then we turned it into buttons for each of the commitments. So I have here two different sets. Oh, the high school's calling me.
Yep, that must be what's happening here, too.
So I have two different sets, I have one set, um, that actually, the gentleman in the video made, where he did visually, um, he gave the commitment, and then he picked graphics that he felt best represented that, um, the commitments. And then I have a s- ones that, um, she, when she made it, she put a definition to it, and it was written in kid-friendly terms. Um, I apologize that the pins don't exactly match up with the words, but I wanted to, kind of, pass them around. It was just fun, and I'm very excited, being able to, kind of... Be creative and, um, be able to show how they understand the, the different commitments of Portrait of a Graduate.
Cause these are fifth graders, and some of these commitments are a little, um, they're a little lofty, but they, they really did a great job. Do you have your, um, samples?
Oh, um...
Have brought stuff? Did you bring stuff? So one of the other things that Brianna did is, um, part of, she, she was, um, piloting student-led conferences this year, and what, part of what she did with her students was to have their student-led conference surround, around, um, the different commitments of the Portrait of a Graduate as well, so she brought some samples, so you all could see how their understanding made its way into their...
So, this is, um, one of my students, I got his permission to be able to, to show, so I didn't take his name off, cause he said that I could bring it. And, I mean, they're not a full year's worth of, of stuff, but you can definitely kind of see the, the thought process that went through for each of the pieces, um, so I can kinda pass that around, um...
Yes, questions?
So, was it an option for the kids, or were all the kids encouraged to make the video, and did they have an opportunity to show the video to their peers, to their fans?
Um, it was a volunteer, so we, it said, had said to, to the kids, like, we're looking for people who are willing to talk about what we've done, the Portrait of a Graduate, um, kind of explain how they connect to it. Some were just like, I wanna talk, and they really didn't think about what they were gonna need to talk about first, um, but once they got in, they were able to, to...
That's great, I had the All About Me videos, that's what Jefferson...
Oh, oh, yes, um, so the All About Me videos, they, we gave them a list of kind of questions, um, of things that they could pick from, to put into it. Um, we gave them a list of required, like, different aspects, like, have a video, have a, have audio, have picture, just so that they can play around with different things, and then they were able to be as creative as they wanted with it. Um, we had some that put their faces, like, recorded and with video in their face. Um, some didn't want their video, so they learned how to do just the audio piece. It was really neat to see the levels of engagement, and the, the challenges they put on themselves, where they would do one thing, and then they'd be like, ooh, can I do? And then they would kind of challenge themselves to take it one step further. So that was really, really neat to see. And then, when I was doing the stuff for the student-led conferences, as soon as I said you can do it in Canva, they were like, yes! They were really excited for that.
Any other questions for Bree?
They are yours to keep, absolutely.
And if you didn't get one, let us know, we'll try to get one.
Yes, we can, we can make, they, we have, we have button masters, we can make more.
Our admissions are game by all.
Aren't they good?
Game by all.
Yeah, it's really nice to see them take ownership. Well, I, I actually told Bree that I thought we could start a really good fundraiser.
Yes.
And rosies, yeah. Rosie and mats.
Mats was the one, like, just, uh, the images.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Excellent stuff though, going on in our middle school. Um, so we'll move on now to item number six, our recognitions. I will kick us off, um, it's a very, very special day for somebody in our district, our beloved school board clerk, Colleen, it is her birthday, so...
I gave it away, my wrapped chair.
It's a wrapped, yes, a wrapped chair given away, so one of us probably has a very happy birthday.
Thank you.
I'll kick us off. Other recognitions?
I would just like to say that I was really, really impressed with the focus walk at the high school. I loved seeing the project-based learning, that was just really fantastic.
I will throw out, uh, I would like to thank everybody for their reaction time for today's, uh, water issue. Everybody worked very quickly, I mean, teachers, admin, the fire department, maintenance, um, so as we worked through that, um, just really impressed with everybody's cooperation and reaction time in addressing that, um, and hopefully it'll be fixed very soon, so thank you to everybody, could've been worse. Any other recognitions? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to our Franklin High School student representative report with Paige.
Since we had April vacation, we haven't had too many events that were going on the past couple weeks. Um, as I said last meeting, the seniors were holding a fundraiser for the month of May, they had, they did a cash calendar, giving away gift cards every day to the Raffle winners. Um, I'm pretty sure this fundraiser was very successful, lots of teachers and students have been very enthusiastic about seeing if they had won the raffle. Uh, Thursday marks the start of the play, The Lightning Thief, which is going on until the Sunday. Students and teachers from the Franklin School District are getting involved. Uh, the show is supposed to be really good, so if you have time to go see it, you should. Progress, progress reports came out this, on the sixteenth, I have seen a lot more work being done in my classes since then. Students are also being given time during their tornado support to go see, or, sorry, to go to their classes and get work done, so I hope to see many students using that as an opportunity to catch up on their work. The last time that we did this, it was very helpful, and many students enjoyed having the time to do so. And then, a class that we have here at Franklin, the UNH Changemaker Challenge, uh, which is taught by Mr. Chapel, went to UNH to present projects, this happened on Friday, the sixteenth, along with many other schools. Uh, there were many groups that came from each school, the students had to research a problem that was going on in the world, and create an innova- innovative solution to that problem. This was a very good opportunity for these students to get out of their comfort zone, and present something that they were passionate about and enjoyed working on.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or your thoughts for you? Good job? Nope, no questions, thank you so much. Alright, next up, we have the approval of prior board minutes for April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion for approval minutes from April twenty-first?
Alright, motion made by Jane. Seconded by Marie, any questions, comments, revisions? Alright, all those, yeah, go ahead.
Um, did you get any of the corrections, like, cause they're just spelling stuff, so...
Yes, the corrections you sent them?
No, I didn't send you any, but I just, I figured somebody would, so I didn't wanna just...
I may have, but I will go through them.
We can do it anyway, because it's just, so it's, doesn't need to be more or less, or something.
But now that I know there are some in there, I'll go through them, thanks Jack. Alright, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, oh my god, abstentions?
Aye, opposed.
Opposed is the word I was thinking of, good lord. Mic abstains, any opposed? Alright, motion passes, minutes are approved, thank you, and we'll do one for the non-public minutes.
Make a motion to approve the non-public minutes, twenty first, twenty twenty-five.
Alright, motion's been made by Jack.
Second.
Seconded by Lori, questions, discussions, revisions? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? One abstention, I might, alright, alright, motion passes, minutes approved, thank you. That's all the minutes we have, correct? Yes, okay. Now we'll move on to our financial report with Jefferson.
Alright, so, good evening everyone. So with the latest financial reports, and I think I might've alluded to this at the last meeting, um, that this would occur, we went from being over budget by two hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars, up to three hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. This is an increase of a hundred and one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars from the previous month. Eighty-nine thousand is related to the special education budget. Currently, our total special education budget is eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and nine dollars more than was budgeted. Uh, this was caused by an out-of-district placement related to tuition and special education contractors for that, um, out-of-district placement. The balance of twelve thousand, six fifteen was spread out over multiple functions throughout the budget. On the plus side, though, our revenues, however, continue to increase, which has minimized the impact of this increase in expenditures. Uh, we have received an additional sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars in indirect costs related to the administration of our grant funds, forty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars in interest on the bank account, and six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars in Medicaid receipts. So taking this information into consideration has changed our fund balance projection from being two hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars behind where we want to be, to two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars behind. Total change was a thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollar impact on the overall budget. I am still confident we can recover all of that when we do our year-end reconciliations. Um, again, for comparison, last year, we were able to recover about four hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars during the year-end cleanup. So, I'm not ready to claim panic at any point right now, just to give you a comparison and understanding of where we are at this point. Our revenues will continue to go up, and we still have a lot of encumbrances that we're not touching, because we have frozen the budget, so a lot of those will get liquidated when we do our year-end requis- reconciliations, and that's how we will typically recover a lot of our funds. Um, and so that's the excitement I have regarding the financial position of the school district, is there anybody have any questions regarding that?
I appreciate your confidence. One quick question on the numbers, say, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, special education costs?
Yeah.
Is that eight hundred and forty-nine thousand in addition to the twenty-two thousand or so per pupil cost that the school would typically have, or is it eight hundred...
No, that, that twenty-two thousand is a historical cost, um, from prior years, we don't have a per pu- per student cost for this year yet. So that typically gets calculated through the year-end reconciliations is what our per pupil cost will end up being. Um, eight, so eight hundred and forty-nine is just an overall component of, say, our six million dollar, six-plus million dollar special education budget. It's eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars more. If you do it by average, though, it's, uh, it, cause one child can cost us over a hundred grand, two hundred grand, so it's, but when you average it out for the entire student population, that twenty-two thousand dollars, we won't know what that number will be until we've completed this year, and I've run everything through the Department of Education's DOE twenty-five, they call it, which is recording all of our revenues and expenditures, and it will break it down, because once we use, well, we get our ADM number, or average daily membership, we plug that number in, and that'll actually give us, once they do the calculation within that workbook, tells how much it costs per pupil, high school, middle school, and just, or excuse me, high school, elementary school, and district-wide, or middle school and elementary school that are combined as considered elementary school for state purposes. So that number for next year, the number that you are reflecting is what, um, was used up through FY twenty-four.
What's the, um, do you anticipate a date for when the reconcili- the end of year reconciliation is complete?
I usually, um, start, well, I actually started working on that during the summertime, but we typically have a lot of, I give usually ourselves a month and a half to get all of our expenditures in, because sometimes it takes a little while to get interest, or revenues, excuse me, invoices and revenues in, because we get a lot of Medicaid checks over the summertime, too. And they usually cut it off about, um, first couple of weeks of August, and then the Department of E- Education and Revenue, expect their reports September first, that's the due date at the state level, to get, um, our information to them, so they know where we are, but I, that's what I would need to know. That's when I know for certain what we're going to look at at that point, too, because that's also when tax rate setting comes into it, so that's why they have that deadline for that particular date, and that gets involved with helping to set the tax rate more at the, uh, town level as opposed to the city level, it's a little different, especially with the tax camp city. We already know where our tax rate will be at that point, so...
Any other questions for Jefferson? Alright, thank you very much.
Dan, did you want me to do the resolution as a weight item?
No, you can do it now.
Do it now?
Yeah, sure.
So the one other thing we have to do, this is just a book, a housekeeping thing regarding the Chromebook lease. Um, we've been working with the attorney, there's some paperwork that's required, um, for signing the lease. Uh, he used a document that we did the last time we did a lease, we actually did it with the same leasing company, American Capital, back in two thousand and nineteen, and this is just, um, a resolution that authorizes myself and the superintendent to enter into the lease purchase of those Chromebooks that we, um, are going to get to use for the next few years. So basically, and I've uploaded the entire document, and I don't know if you had an opportunity to read it, but it just basically says, you know, the school board had approved the budget on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, which included the appropriation for this particular lease. And it's actually, the lease payment's less than what we budgeted, so, um, we just need a motion that moves the resolution to authorize lease purchase of the Chromebook computers in the principal amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred dollars, be adopted, informed, presented to this meeting. And so if I can have a motion to do that, that way we can submit this resolution signed, um, by the school board clerk, um, no one else has to sign it, and the minutes from this meeting to move the paperwork forward with the leasing company.
Alright, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution, to authorize lease purchase of Chromebooks for the next few years. Principal amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred.
Alright, motion made by Leah.
Sorry.
Seconded by Lori, any questions, discussion? Alright, we don't need, this is just, um, all's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One, Jack, opposition, any abstentions? Alright, motion passes.
Colleen, can you make sure you have that, um, detailed documented, so I have to send a copy of the minutes to, um, the attorney to finalize the paperwork?
Do you realize I'm leaving tonight for vacation? I'm not even kidding. You know, I'm, I'll take care of you, Jefferson, I got you.
At least get your signature on this, I can send it over.
Also?
Yep, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
What's that? Yeah, there are those one here, I need you to sign it, you're the only person that has to sign it, that you actually witnessed everything, and you're testing to it. Collateral, you know, stuff like that.
Power's in your hands. Okay, we'll move on now to item number ten, committee reports. Who wants to kick us off? Is it me? You have finance, right?
No minutes yet. So, uh, the finance committee met last week on the, on Wednesday. We discussed the current, uh, this upcoming year's budget, we went through the reports with Jefferson, it was very insightful. And we discussed some long-term planning, and, uh, our presentation to the city council, which will be coming up hopefully this upcoming month. And that's really...
That was Tuesday the thirteenth.
That was Tuesday the thirteenth, yes. We also, yeah, no, that was it, yes.
Did you make your answer?
We do.
It's the tenth, at five-thirty of June.
Thank you.
I have policy and a kind of I two as well, okay, this is payback, huh? Alright, uh, so, the policy committee met on May sixth at four-thirty, and, um, we're still waiting for the legislative updates to go over, so we started, um, re-reviewing our most, uh, the, the policies that have, haven't been reviewed in the longest time. Um, we referred a couple to the NHSBA, so we're working with them, um, to get some answers. We are also going to be adding Policy BCA, the Board Member Ethics, to our landing page, so that it's more easily accessible for everybody. And then we're just going to continue going through our policies, um, we have a few that we revised and edited, and those are for first read, um, tonight. Nothing, nothing crazy, and our next meeting is going to be on June seventeenth at four-thirty. And then, after that, we had an I two meeting on Tuesday, May sixth, at six. And we spent, uh, I would say majority of our time talking with our, uh... And we spent, I would say, majority of our time talking with our, about artificial intelligence. Dave Cole came in and discussed the different technologies that our teachers are working on using, and the different considerations, and the trainings that are going into that, and all the different considerations. And we got a lot of follow-up information on that, which was excellent. We will be getting a special education update from Rebecca next month. And those are pretty much the highlights. And surprise, surprise, we will be meeting on June seventeenth at six P M. Again. That's policy and I two. Did any other committees? Uh, six seventeen. At six P M. Uh, policy is at four-thirty. Yes, policy's at four-thirty, I two's at six. Um, any other committees? Yes?
Scholarship committee met on May seventh at five P M. We had a great discussion, well, students and scholarship, and we selected people to be revealed in the near future.
Other committee updates?
There was a, the goals committee hasn't met yet this, uh, meet next week on the twenty-eighth. Yeah, on the twenty-eighth.
On the twenty?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. I was gonna say wait a minute. That's very hard. Okay, excellent. Thank you for that update. Alright, so if that's all for committee reports.
Oh, that's my, yeah. I get the, I have to talk to Jefferson.
Okay. We're good?
Sorry.
Nope, always fine. Alright, so we're done with committee reports. We will move on to new business with Superintendent Legall.
Alright, so first I want to show off the SEU eighteen annual report. I'll pass it around.
That's real good.
Chris, I can't thank you enough for all the work you do in helping to put this together. We're gonna get thirty copies of this. This has gone out electronically to the community and everybody. But we'll get thirty copies. We'll make sure every board member gets a nice copy, the city council and the mayor, and we'll have copies available at the schools as well, but I'll pass this around. Every year it gets better and better, and this is a nice upgrade for sure. So the first item tonight to talk about is the federal general assurances document. So every year, about this time in May, we receive the general assurances, which is a sign-off that the school board chair and the superintendent do, and need to be authorized by the school board. And it's about a twenty-five-page document that talks about all of the requirements that we need to certify, that we go through in terms of grant management and the use of federal funds. This year is a little bit controversial, as a lot of the federal funds seem to be these days. As we talked about before, our attorney has given us a couple of options to consider. There's really three options to consider. One is just signing off on the documents, as we have always done in the past, knowing that there's some litigation and controversial issues regarding Title VI and Title IX in the document. He's also given us two cover letters to consider. One where we decline to sign off on the documents, and one where we sign off on the documents, but we put in that notice or that letter where we disagree with some of the controversial items in the general assurances. So my recommendation is for the, for the board to have this conversation and decide about which direction we want to go in. These are due right at the beginning of June, so we do need to make some sort of decision tonight. So I'm looking for the board to have a conversation about this and decide what direction we want to go in here.
I can kick us off, being the person who has to sign it and having read the general assurances. It follows the inconsistency issues that we found with the last thing we need to sign, which I've already kind of put in my mind away. The updates that they made are inherently contradictory within the same bullet points. They talk about non-discrimination, and then also say that compliance must be with executive orders that are inherently discriminatory. So, in my opinion, it very much muddies the waters and is a bit, for lack of a better term, nonsensical. And the contradictions, I think, diminish it in a way that is disappointing overall. That being said, my opinion is I don't think we can, we, I don't think we can afford to play with the funding our students need and deserve to help them succeed. Having read the cover letters, version two, I, covers it, I really enjoy the phrase. The beginning of the second paragraph, while we have signed it, "We note that it is significantly broader than it has been in prior years and requires school district superintendents and school board chairs to certify compliance with policy interpretations which do not have the force and effect of law or even rulemaking." So it speaks to the contradictions that they've, they've put in there, and just the wide variety of interpretations that can come about with it. So, I'm in favor of version two, the cover letter. I think it's important to state our position and just discuss the issues with it and, and bring that up. It, I think we would be remiss to not speak up in a way that is meaningful, but also I don't believe would jeopardize the funding for our students.
Can I make a motion that we authorize the school board chair, the superintendent, to sign the general assurances with the covered letter to Ms. Levonville attached? The one that states enclosed the executed general assurances requirements and definitions for participation in federal programs, general assurances, quote, "The Franklin School District, district practices, programming, and operations are, in my opinion, consistent with the United States Constitution and applicable federal laws, statutes, and regulations. While the Franklin School District has signed the general assurances as provided, we note that it is significantly broader than it has been in prior years and requires school district superintendents and school board chairs to certify compliance with policy interpretations which do not have the force and effect of law or even rulemaking. Many of the policy interpretations with which the New Hampshire DOE is mandating compliance have been enjoined by the federal court orders, NEA versus U.S. Department of Education, case number one, colon, twenty-five, C V zero 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 nine one, et cetera, American Federation Teachers versus Department of Education, et al., civil case S A G twenty-five, six twenty-eight, C. Elsotrell, et al., verse, Etablou, et al., case twenty, twenty-four, C V two-five-one, L M T S M. Accordingly, in executing the general assurances, the Franklin School District certifies that it is in compliance with federal law as informed by the United States Constitution, statute, federal regulations, and applicable case law, and the requirements of the general assurances as qualified are interpreted by applicable court orders or injunctions."
Motion made by Jack, seconded by Jane.
For the record.
Discussion, questions?
I have just a general question. Are there any ways in which these new, the new verbiage here for Title VI and IX expand rights or privileges for any class, protected class, or individual? I know none of you are lawyers, right, or just, um?
Yeah. Expand the rights for protected classes?
Or any, any individual?
They don't speak to expansion of rights. Everything that I've read speaks to sort of lessening impact and mitigating discriminatory practices, ensuring certain things don't happen, not that the things do happen. It, it's mostly language of like, shall not be, shall not be prevented from doing X, shall, shall not be prevented from doing Y. So it's not, I wouldn't describe it as an expansion. I would describe it as a non-encroachment, I think is the phrase I would use. And it is not clear on specific protected classes. Most of the, the Title VI and Title IX language deals specifically only with race. That's specifically what's mentioned, but in the new language, I'm not even sure that's specifically mentioned. I can't remember correctly. Short answer now. Jack?
Madam Chair, if I may ask the superintendent a question?
Yes.
Superintendent Legall, does the Franklin School District, or will the Franklin School District discriminate? Thank you.
Any other questions? Did that help?
Could through an action, the school district allow discrimination to happen under its roof, but still be in line with the new verbiage of Title VI and Title IX? Can you restate the question, please? If we are in compliance with the updated verbiage of Title VI and Title IX, and somebody not a faculty or not through process or policy commits an act of discrimination in one of our buildings, would that act be protected still under Title VI and Title IX?
I would say, if somebody commits an act of discrimination, that we would vet it versus all applicable federal state laws, and we would act on it accordingly.
Additional questions, comments?
Can anybody provide insight? I don't know, none of you wrote this updated verbiage, but can anybody provide insight for myself and anybody listening as to what the purpose of these changes were? Or are? I know it's, I know it's speculative. I'm not, I'm not saying any of you, right, like, none of you are...
So, gosh, I read it about two months ago. So largely it has to do, I mean, with its, the executive orders, it was mostly aimed at institutions of higher education that historically have engaged in practices that could be associated with affirmative action. And the executive orders feel that those policies and practices were discriminatory, and so the executive order states that that shall not happen, that nobody shall be prevented, or, you know, prevented from achieving X, Y, and Z for those matters. That's basically what it was rooted in. Again, so the, the executive orders in themselves are very far removed from our experiences here in Franklin. And they're also very broad and vague and contradictory, and I will stop there.
That was a good summary.
Thank you.
If you don't sign this, we should lose Title VI and Title IX.
And beyond.
All of our federal grants.
Federal funds.
We don't get funding for Title VI or Title IX, but there are, but all of our grants that we get puts it at risk.
Which, yeah, which is what, twenty-three, four, twenty-six, a third of our, yeah, it's a lot.
Talking about over two million dollars of potential funding that we need. We don't want to create obstacles to get that.
And again, I, I, I would say, consistent with the other, with signing the, the compliance documents before, like Superintendent Legall mentioned, we can confidently sign, knowing that we are doing, we are not, we have policies and procedures in place to fight discrimination. We deal with it. We are in compliance, and the executive orders are so tangentially related essentially that we have no qualms about signing it, knowing we're doing what's best for our students.
As long as I understand that this doesn't actually have a negative impact on how, how we have our current policies and how we, and faculty treat and support themselves here.
And I, uh, speaking up behalf of the policy committee, we have reviewed those, and I can confidently say we have not, it, it has not directly impacted the way that we will comport ourselves in the district.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Alright, motion on the floor, made by Jack, seconded by Jane. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, opposed? Opposed first. Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Liz and I will initial and sign off on that document tonight. Alright, next up is our class rank situation, and our decision is tonight. So we've talked about this for almost a year now, I think. And tonight's the night we're, we're bringing it to the board for, for a vote. Dave, do you have any last discussion or anything you want to talk about regarding the class rank situation?
No, I just put something in the board packet about changes to the rank or what it would look like, so that might answer some of the questions you have, like what happens to it in how we identify different levels of ability and things like that, and GPA. So if anybody has any questions about that, I can answer that.
So, we had a discussion, we can answer questions. It's in the board's hands at this point to take some actions. My recommendation is that you eliminate class rank as we know it and implement the new, the new approach that we've been talking about for the last eight months, based on, basically a math problem with the grading system as it, as we know it. We've seen that over the last two years, it becoming an issue. And it will only become a greater issue as we head into the years beyond this, beyond this year. So that's my recommendation to you.
Need a motion?
I do, yes.
Can I make a motion that Franklin School eliminates the current class rank system?
Effective twenty-five, twenty-six, yeah.
Effective the...
Twenty-five, twenty-six, yeah.
Need in favor of the Latin honors?
I don't, I don't think you, you, you can say it moves to the...
Latin honors?
Latin honors system that we discussed.
And that we, and we move to the, the Latin honors system.
Alright, motion made by Michael. Seconded by Lori. Questions, discussion? Yes?
Can we restate that again? That was the beginning part of that?
Sure. Uh, so I am moving that the Franklin School System move to eliminate the current class rank system and move to the Latin honors system.
For the twenty-five?
Of, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, alright.
Okay, motion made.
That was it.
That was good. That was, that was very good, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Alright, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstent? Opposed?
Abstention.
Abstention, okay. We have one abstention. Alright, motion passes?
Okay, thank you. Alright, I have three resignations for you to take action on tonight. I have Barbara Worth, our middle school assistant administrator. I have Jen Thomas, a grade six math teacher, and I have Dave Bedard, a high school math teacher.
Alright, motion made by Leanne.
Sorry.
Seconded by Michael. Questions, discussion? Alright, alls in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, and we accept the resignations with regret.
Okay.
Much regret.
Alright, I'm happy to have two nominations tonight. I have Michelle Dion, eighth-grade language arts teacher for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and Mary Lodge, third-grade teacher for twenty-five, twenty-six school year.